Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning board meeting, April 5th, 2018. Good all rise with the lead. Let's leave it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please. Mr. Reilly.
Here.
Ms. Ogles. Mr. McNeely.
Here.
Ms. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. DuFrye. Ms. Saunders. Mr. Fellers. So tonight, we're here for a Crossroads Holdings LLC requesting master plan review Phase One for Scarborough Downs, successor to Matt Law, 52 lot four. I'd like to note at this time that we have Susan Ogles as a voting member this evening. And I'll pass Jay if you'd like to take a primer on this floor.
Sure. Just kicking off real briefly, as this is sort of a continuation of a previous meeting the board had some weeks ago, maybe a month ago, on the first phase master plan for the Scarborough Downs project. As a reminder, this is the master plan for Phase One. So the zoning, the crossroad, the plant development district has a very measured and stepped approach to review and approval for certain projects. And it's foregone through the first phase of doing the preliminary infrastructure plan back in the wintertime, and now the applicant is before you for their master plan and the first phase of development. So as part of the master plan review process, there are standards that are laid out in Section 7E of the ordinance, as well as in the crossroad plan development section of the ordinance. I think as board members may recall, last time, we went through a series of these, and the board members principally had questions really around trying to... One of the items that the board is to do as part of the master plan is to determine the spacing bulk standards, the allowable spacing bulk standards, such as lot size, frontage, coverage, those sorts of things. And the applicant has proposed spacing bulk standards for your consideration, but board members wanted a little more information about really what that was going to look like, both in terms of the lot layout, but I think also in terms of architectural and development design standards. And so the applicants worked to provide some additional materials there. There's a host of other elements that staff standards, I mean staff memo sort of walks through, but as staff really recalls, those were sort of the principal elements that the board wanted more information on moving forward. So with that, I would end staff's presentation. Turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jerry. Yeah?
Thank you very much for having us here tonight and to meet on a Thursday night. I think you're going to find it very helpful to be able to go through the details that we have to present to you tonight. I have Dan and Nick here with a pretty nice presentation, and I think we ought to cut the chase and get started with Dan's piece to start with.
Thanks, and thanks for having us again. We've been busy since our last meeting in early March, really kind of getting at what Jay outlined, kind of fine tuning the design of Phase One, getting into some more details on really kind of feel the character of this development project. So we're going to kind of jump right in and get into those details. And as we introduce, just first want to start with, I'm next. And as I'm sure you recall from earlier in the year, this is the conceptual infrastructure plan that was approved by the board in January. It's very high level, and we're really zooming in on that lower quadrant along Route One. So that's what we're talking about tonight. Phase One master plan review really from Route One up just south of where the site opens up to the great stands before the site. We reviewed this in detail earlier in March, and it's in your packages, original submission. What the master plan process expects is a site inventory that outlines really the natural conditions and existing conditions of the area that we're looking to develop. Sort of shows land, various cover on the left, story homes in this area, the drainage patterns in this area, the infrastructure utilities that serve the area around. This part of the project, principally along Route One, and Enterprise Technology West, there is limited infrastructure utility that sort of exists down the site, and is limited in terms of its ability to sort of give development. And the last image on the right is highlighting in yellow the upland areas, the areas appropriate for development. The green are the wetland areas. It's mapped and delineated by our wetland scientist. The blue band is the stream quarter for Millbrook on this edge here. And then these orange areas are uplands, but they're isolated from the rest of the site, due to wetlands and other things. So since our presentation in March, we focused on updating Phase One infrastructure plan. Again, it's fairly high level. This is a process we're learning and learning about in terms of the specific utility layouts. But this image here is applicable for generally how Phase One would be served by utilities. So sewer would actually be served by Technology West, sewer system that's in Enterprise and Park West. Sewers serve this part of the area from the entrance of company here, and we're thinking about a connection down here to serve this part of the development. Anticipate a water line being extended up from Route One to serve this entire Phase One. Also anticipate electric coming up from Route One and creating a really a backbone of electric service through the site, and that would continue on to the core of the site. And then there'll be services that would come off of that to serve flames and possible stuff. In addition, natural gas would be coming up, but not yet, right now, to provide some gas utilities to this phase. Also looking at, we're looking to your fiber optic service, running conduit that provides for a high level of heat exchange at the recommendation of Caremark, so I've been working on that. This over here is an update to the master plan, a bit more synched version. And there's some specific changes we've made since early March. We've looked more closely at the layout of this residential pod, and instead of two dead ends, we're proposing this to be a loop interconnected street as recommended by the board, and is called four in the zoning. So that's been adjusted. We've bolstered our buffer to the east. The zone required 100-foot buffer to providing residential districts, so that's been highlighted more prominent here. So we're planning on a pretty significant buffer to Enterprise Business Park. There's right now, the answer comes in, is that we think are important for kind of buffering technology way from our project and vice versa. And so we're focusing on keeping as many roads as possible to keep that kind of moving forward on the website and in the project. And those are some of the highlights of things that have changed since our last meeting in terms of the details of this master plan. We'll be into more details, but the thinking is that this is very much a mixed residential project with some light commercial uses possible. So in terms of specific uses in these areas, we're thinking this is a single-family residential area here. We're laying out, and you'll see pretty much more details later about this, this is a multi-family pod. We're looking at this as a mixture of garden condos along the Downs Road. So eight-unit buildings here, single-story complexes here, more kind of cottage-style complexes along this Loop Road. We're talking with a memory care group that's very interested in the project and has fit into the neighborhood in this location. And in this area, we don't have too many details on the anticipating, it could be a mixed-use area where there could be some commercial and residential together. I think another, one of the staff comments that came up last time we were together was whether or not to create a four-way intersection here with potential connections to the technology way. We've looked at this a number of different ways, and it really lays out in a much better way, and you'll see pictures and video footage later, for a multi-family kind of compact neighborhood here, where you're meaning that really isn't possible for the road coming through the middle of it. So we've instead offset these roadways over 150 feet, which is good practice and minimum standards in terms of roadway separation. While there will be some cross-traffic and some use here, we don't see it as a high-volume intersection, so we think that separation is...
See it still there, vehicles, or...
I think down the road, a vehicle connection, we're showing sidewalk connection that can monitor that coming down the multi-family neighborhood here. So, but right now, it's a rough neighborhood, it'll be an accident. So getting into more detail, as requested by the board and as appropriate at this stage, we've looked a lot at, you know, design of the streets, really to have them be complete streets, to be safe, comfortable, multimodal. Our goal with this whole project is to be walkable, to be bikeable, to be comfortable, safe, to have slower travel speeds, et cetera. So this image here shows our current concept of the layout of Phase One. And in blue here, that's the Downs Road, what we were just talking about, and then these internal streets. And these are the different street cross-sections we're thinking about for... So for the Downs Road, you know, we're anticipating this to be providing a lot of travel lanes to have generous bike lanes for bikers along the length of the road. In places, we're anticipating some on-street parking, particularly where there's dwelling units and multi-family condos up close to the street. Anticipating the building to engage with the street, to be of the village character, of a more urban or village context. We mentioned sort of a buffer to Enterprise over here, so you see this is being a healthy buffer, and then having esplanade and sidewalk that's been varied from six to eight feet, depending on the section of Downs Road. In front of the handouts, it might be a bit narrower, but moving up towards the rest of the project, we anticipate six or eight for a wide path that is not just walking, but for bikers, joggers, folks heading up to what you hope to be kind of the center of the...
Do you have any more questions, as you go along with the other questions?
If that's okay with you. And then I'll clear the chair. Okay, let's try, go for it.
Trees. I'm looking at, um, the architecture and looking at what would be this piece. And I'm curious, because it shows in the most of the trees just out there, where all trees are part of landscape, all of this. What is that, that going to be, is naturally...
That's going to be the open space areas. And it's shown some of the trees, there's more out there. And we have some details on that later, too, that will help tell that sort of...
I'm looking at something like this, I'm never sure just exactly, but I'm looking at it's architecturally designed by the architect, and what's actually what they have...
You mean what's existing and what might be proposed?
Yeah, this is, this is very nice. I mean, how dense is it going to be? I mean, you get a drawing, it doesn't tell much. So the ones in the back are always...
We don't touch on that. The surrounding trees are the open space, the wetland areas that are going to be conserved. And we can touch on the landscaping plans later on here, and also later on in the...
Well, did you hear from... Yeah, yeah. Are you looking at, putting in any kind of any roundabouts or anything that to have traffic coming to any degree? Because it appears to me if it's going to straight, it's going to be a straight run through there, and see people just running through there pretty fast.
We are in this section of the Downs Road, from Route One through this phase, we're anticipating right as you come in off of Route One to actually have our landscapes begin. So that will be planted with shade trees in the middle of both lanes, and then on both sides, there would be trees. That helps provide traffic coming as you come into the section here. There's going to be on-street parking that also helps with the traffic coming. Then right beyond, and we don't have details of this at this point, but right beyond where Phase One ends and transitions towards the rest of the property, the road is actually going to bend, because this alignment doesn't follow the current alignment.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Exactly. It actually shifts a little bit towards Enterprise. So coming in, there's going to be a bit of a bend more than there is today. And then there's going to be a bend back to the current alignment after you get to the project. So we think the combination of those things are really going to get at sort of slowing common traffic, particularly coming into and out of this...
I'm just thinking if you're going to, and I understand how the structures across the road, and then if you're going to have lot vehicles regularly, too, potentially could be dangerous if there's some kids or something, right? You know, especially, I mean, that's going to be, I mean, people come through there already, and it's not...
So we're, we've been thinking a lot about that, and we're intentionally kind of trying to keep this section of road wide enough to serve the traffic that's going to need, but narrow enough to contract, and on-street parking helps with that. And right now, the Downs Road is incredibly wide, so it's not going to resemble in a way that you experienced.
So you're basically talking about the Downs Road being someone to...
Yeah, that type of approach as you come in and leave this area.
Dan, in terms of the calming traffic, where you start on-street parking, are you thinking about having some sort of bump outs?
Yeah, there would be...
So that also then would calm traffic when they see those, and there's parking on the other side of them, is that...
Exactly, yeah. There would be bookends or bump outs at both ends of the run of on-street parking, that would be landscaped.
Okay, and then that will, that will slow folks down when they see that as well?
Yeah. I think you'll enjoy a later piece of this, that I'll kind of...
You'll explain it.
You'll explain this. But I think it'll help with understanding that. And so the lower image here, and there's a similar cross-section, but this is for the, more of the internal streets, the neighborhood streets. And we're proposing a 22-foot-wide buildings in this setting, where there'd be 11-foot lanes, esplanades, so six to eight foot wide planted esplanades, and then sidewalks on one or both sides, depending on the area.
Okay. What arrangements do you have upon the, you know, the local streets?
There's a few select areas that we're looking at on-street parking, not, not in a comprehensive way, but there's the memory care, they have some on-street parking for guests. The multi-family, they have some on-street parking also for guests.
Because I was just, um, kind of... Something that you were trying to do, but they have to do once a month. Every once in a while, they have a section, visit is good.
Right.
Maybe probably happens, doesn't happen, which is obviously right.
So this shows some still images that help show what we're talking about, show these perspectives. This is the concept for the single-family portion of the waterline duplex. Oh, sorry. Similar to the single family.
Oh, sorry, the air system, sorry.
So this shows, again, a 22-foot-wide road, the esplanades, the street trees, sidewalks, and buildings relative across the street. We're going to talk more about that, but it's intentional to have front torches in the buildings, address the street, address the public space, and then have private spaces on purpose. Again, this is a single-family image, and there's another highlight of this, but we're showing an island actually in a few different places through the single-family neighborhood, and it's, has multiple purposes that we'll kind of get into in a little bit. This is an area here coming into portion of the project that perhaps a memory care facility, since that's this building here, would occur, and that's that showing some on-street parking for their guests. And again, this is a gateway into the neighborhood, so that can help calm traffic.
Can I get you to jump back one slightly? I just want to make one point. And I know we're not, you know, we're not really getting into the, really the details on layout and everything, but we envision this section to be private way, private street. We envision this to be a public street, and then of course, this in the compartments would be private. So kind of, you know, public way here, private, private.
Which would be...
Well, this, this primary, this is a condominium project.
Oh, okay.
And so, you know, traditionally, they would, they would own all, you know, all those streets and common areas and whatnot. It, as I said, it's traditional, it's, you know, it's going to help us with the town side of the ROI, frankly, if the town, you know, doesn't have to own and maintain this section. So it just seemed to make sense, whereas this is more of a traditional subdivision. And again, we'll get into this as we get into the details of subdivision and whatnot, but I just thought that I should try to make that clear.
Dan, I got a quick question on this.
Yes.
You know, we're talking a little bit, are you going to do street lighting in these areas, or do you, since the houses are that close to the walkway, is it home on the street lighting?
We anticipate some street light. We haven't gotten that far in terms of detailing of that and spacing and what that looks like, but we're in places certainly...
I would imagine so.
Yeah. So in addition to the kind of the street network and walkability and bikeability and auto traffic on the streets, we've been looking at and thinking a lot about sort of pathways and trails and kind of engaging the neighborhood with the open space. And there's at least 40% of this, of this phase is open space, those trees that you're referring to, Susan, earlier. And so we spent a lot of time figuring out trail alignments to connect the two neighborhoods and kind of designing plans, and not only connecting the neighborhoods, but also engaging with future phases of the project, engaging with the state property that's at the east. There's conservation land that actually ties the half of Sawyer Road into the town campus, and that's what campus, where we are. So it's hard to see from your seats, these lighter yellow lines are kind of a mix of more kind of structure. Sidewalk and group it here, but then the trail connections through the project from one area to the next, and they also include some kind of pocket parks that will show you a little bit.
Dan, if the, if the condo is a private road, and the other street is a public street, and you're going to have trails connecting them, is there going to be some sort of information on a deed that says people can walk through the private areas, or...
Yes, the answer is yes. So we envision that there'll be a master association from a whole project that will own and maintain a lot of this trail system.
All right, and is the model arrested, which has a leg in...
Yep. There'll be, you know, legal documents put in place so that this can be maintained, can be made, and that public can access the trail system.
Something that's been, you know, Dina's been a lot of times, they're thinking about materials, thinking about sort of the character of these pathways, and we're anticipating, given that some of these areas are wetlands, and wanting to be sensitive to crossing wetlands, that there's going to be some boardwalks in addition to more natural paths. So we have details on that, but that's what these two different images are showing, is how to treat those walkways based on landscaping. And this is an area here that we sort of talked about, that is not only for traffic common reasons, but it's really highlighting this pedestrian, crosswalk, and linkage trail from one open space to the next, and off to other parts of the neighborhood and some common area. That's right up here. Here, and then same kind of treatment up in the stairs. And later, we'll kind of get into what these details are. This image here is showing a representation of what this area could be, where it's actually a kind of a pocket park neighborhood that, excuse me, brings space behind the neighborhood, behind the houses, kind of tying into this screen light. So you cross the area, you walk through the woods, and end up on this pathway that brings you back out to the street.
That lawn area is going to be that, that blank space on concrete, basically.
Yeah.
So that's going to be a landscape outside.
We envision it to have some active area, yeah, where people can be out. And part of this project is, these are, these are small lots, and some more compact neighborhoods. So to compensate for that, balance with that, we want to provide these other areas to have some additional space to gather, and also to be offered to the more natural areas of the project. So one of the things that we talked about the last meeting is getting more of a sense for the different unit types, beginning to look at kind of form, character, and as I introduced earlier, thinking about a range of different residential housing types, thinking about some multi-family, and three stories such as this, thinking about eight-unit, two-story condo and garden condos such as this. We're also looking at more of the duplex cottages, single-story living with garages like this, and then more kind of traditional single-family homes. This last image is concept for a memory care facility, is of the scale that fits a neighborhood. So it's, you know, 12-bed slash room facility, it's single-story or one and a half stories. It's not, you know, it's not a larger facility, but sometimes they...
They're programmed out.
This is something that we think fits really, fits nicely, and they want to be part of the neighborhood. So the common spaces, the trails are really important to them as well for use and to engage with the neighborhood.
Again, I'm not sure what time, but I can see in general, which you're showing me here, well, the size of various types of housing. The problem, the architecture is, there's a lot to be desired, and I anticipate that we're going to spend quite a bit of time on that when it comes around to this one. House will be having some really nice landscaping, some really nice property, and one building is going to be as special as possible. This doesn't do it except for memory care, that's very cool.
We're at a stage that this is our level of ability to generate architecture. We haven't, we don't have architectural plans yet, so I think you'll see later on, the use of this is a preliminary stage where these aren't sort of architectural renderings. These are used through a different software system.
Just be an idea of the size of the buildings, which is what I'm looking for.
We're trying to, trying to talk about mass and bulk and relationship.
Could I just ask, the single family and the, the single-story condos, of what size, what footprint we're talking?
The duplex condos are going to be right around 1,500 square feet.
Each side?
Each side.
Okay.
Each side. Some units will have a one-car garage, some will have a two-car garage, and that's more of open space where it all fits. The houses are going to be in the 13 to maybe as high as 1,800 square feet, depending on if all the garage is finished or the third floor is finished. Most of the houses will be, will have a two-car garage. We have a few that maybe won't, but might happen to have a one-car or only size one-car. But that's just kind of a...
But, but what you're looking at, this is what, what we've been talking about in terms of workforce housing, and that's...
Yeah, it's not three big, you know, huge 3,000 square foot houses. We don't, those just don't, don't, don't fit here.
So as Nick was saying, we're going to show a little bit later, this is more about size, scale, massing, some key architectural features being the front porches and having a huge anywhere the street. And this kind of gets into it as well. So pivoting from types of units to how it applies to the plan, over here is, you know, the beginnings of our sketch plan for this phase. Then we really needed to progress this enough in our picture of the material we wanted to see to a sketch plan level. Now, so sort of, we're moving right between master plan and subdivision right now with kind of our plan development. So that's what this, this is showing over here to kind of give a sense for building orientation, lot sizes, building sizes. And, you know, this is representing how we see the single-family homes engaging with the street, having front porches being oriented towards the sidewalk, being close to the right-of-way, having minimal setbacks to the right-of-way, having backyard spaces, you can't see in this image, sort of active, active front yards. This is showing a trail that goes back to the trail system we talked about earlier. And to kind of design this ride and to have the buildings and lots fit in, that's why we're, we're asking the board for five-yard setbacks, so that five-foot side yard setbacks.
Five yards, no problem.
So you're not going to have any avenues in this second?
We're not, we're not in the, the single-family section. We are going to have kind of a, it's a driveway slash alley for some of the other units. But in this area, we've brought away from alleys for the single-family in favor of that, that trail system.
Sure.
Sort of that, that open space to the rear. And so, and this is showing, again, more like a five-foot setback to the property line to enable that trail. We've been working with the fire department on side yard setbacks for, for fire safety reasons, and he's comfortable with 10-foot separations between units, so that, you know, five-foot setback enables that, that minimum separation. It won't always be the case, but we've been laying it out so that it's possible on many lots. This image down here shows the duplex cottage program. Again, buildings close to the street. We've been thinking a lot about having kind of front stoves, front porches closer to the street, closer to the sidewalk, recessing the garages to the extent that we can, so that they're, they're back from front door, from the front porch.
Dan, for the, the single family, are there sidewalks on both sides of the street? They can go into the condos, sidewalks are only at one side?
Single family, they're, they're on both sides.
Okay.
The, are you talking, a lot of developments that I've seen where they got the homes closer to the street, they have porches on the front to try and entice one neighborhood and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a design theme kind of throughout. There may not be front porches along the full, like the front facade, but it could be the full facade front porch. You could be, you want to vary the architecture as well, so it could be partial front porch or stoop. But these are...
If you don't mind, if I could just sort of jump off to that question. Have you thought about sort of a minimum or maximum type of depth of the porch? Sometimes you can sort of see some porches that are, you can barely fit a chair on, or else, just something to be thinking about for later stages is...
So it's functional?
Yeah, so it's functional, right. So I don't know what the right answer is, but just, right, when you're thinking about the long ones on, of the four million, sure it's in that, but, but yes.
So these are, again, similar images that illustrate our goal for having buildings closer to the street, minimal setbacks to the street for those reasons that were stated. And again, another illustrating, this shows the sidewalks on both sides, yes, or not, in the single-family portion of the project.
But how far is that setback?
We're proposing a zero setback be allowed. I don't think it'll be used in the home cases.
Would it right next to the sidewalk, is that...
Well, the right-of-way often will be behind the sidewalk by a few feet. So, and again, this is probably showing more of a 10 to 12-foot distance from the sidewalk to the porch, I mean, 10 to 15. It's also going to vary as to constraints to the rear. You know, sometimes there's a weapon area that we want to block for 12. So we're not at that sort of level of detail placing each home, but we're anticipating single-family homes probably in that 10-foot...
But perhaps some variety, where you look down the street, so you're not seeing just a, you know, straight line, but...
And there's some examples of, in other communities where they've used, you know, some, they allow some encroachment of, say, the front porch or some portions of the...
I did a lot of research online on this, so I, I saw that here.
Yep. So that could be something that we talk about later as well.
So do you have to do fencing and the stone wall and everything? Is that kind of the problem at the whole?
We're going to show a bit more detail on this through the fly-through, but... Yeah, I mean, this is showing a piece of a common space that's been actually behind some units in one area. And we've been thinking a lot about delineating private and public space, and that, like the fence is, is that delineation where this is actually a resident's backyard, and it could be a gate, and this is the common space for that whole part of the neighborhood. And we'll show it more in a second.
Yeah, I think Nick's come up with a great idea on how to handle that, you know, that demarcation of the public-private, and that's what you see kind of the common area a little bit.
Yeah, you can see as, as we get more compact, these compact spaces, that you almost need some delineation between the public and private space that can make these rooms, right? And you can almost picture that space, if, you know, if you take away the fence or the wall or some of the planting, it might feel a bit less comfortable.
You know, as on the side, you know, there's a place in Massachusetts that they've devised, makes those stone walls altogether in the, in the way.
I didn't know that.
But they're giving like 20 seconds.
It's real stone. Wow.
Let's go have a look, some of the trees too.
So this is plan view, kind of what we've been talking about. So zooming back out to the plan view, you know, we're talking about small lots, and we don't anticipate necessarily, you know, 2500 square foot minimum lots or many of them. But we included that because there's, there could be some opportunity for the duplex to actually be visual blocks. We may not go that direction in this phase, we've been talking about that, but in order to have that kind of compact character, having that allowance, we think is appropriate here. At least, most of the single-family lots we've been laying out in the amount of five, 5,000 square foot range, 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. And that's just a snapshot of, of that type of density. It is just a snapshot of the duplex cottage area we were just actually kind of looking at, an area here where the duplex backyard is integrated, talk to the commons, the common space. And then this is a blow-up of the multi-family area. And these buildings are intentionally going to be close to the street to kind of create that, that streetscape that we desire coming into the down road, have the esplanade, the out-street park. So this helps, the plan view illustrates the thoughts behind this base of all that's being proposed. And we've brought numbers on how this relates to development coverage, and we're comfortable with how the plan complying with the town standard, the 75% mass of coverage, and don't think that will be, in many places, we're going to be, you know, close to that, and others, we're comfortable with leaving that overarching standard in the zone. I think one of the last elements you want to touch on before, I think, as we fun with the group, is the commons, the pocket parks and greenways. We've talked a bit about it already. This image at the top is in the area that we see is being more of a pocket park type area behind the houses in the single-family, pot of the development, the trails all leading to it, and can have some kind of natural place games for kids in the neighborhood, fire pits, some other chairs, just sort of a gathering place, a place to, a place to hang out. Within that category, that's got in place in that part of the project. This is a similar but very different program that we're thinking about around the duplex cottages and the memory care, where it's truly a formal common that adds landscaping, they got a place to gather, perhaps a wall, and we're thinking about what the details of that are. Want to get your input, so this is sort of the, the layout every time, the character of it. This is a common green space that will be next to the, the multi-family. So they're all different in design, but...
Dan, have you thought about dog parks in any of these areas?
We've talked about that. We don't have any image of what that would look like, but we have a place in mind, and we're, we're going to fine-tune that before we have a subdivision submission, to figure out where that is and what the, what the size and layout of that will look like.
Yeah, Dan, that button, that photograph there, is that the, the apartments, look at it from the common?
It's from the back side, the opposite of the down road?
Okay.
Yep. And there's silver here and a little silver here, where there could be some archery there.
I think the parents of those buildings would rather in this context, but just no one building.
So... This is the next case. I think I'm done before someone will move a little bit before me.
Sure. So we have Cleveland? Here we go. So we're starting above the downs road with Route 1 behind us, and we're going to enter into the local street. There's opportunity for signage here on the left. And then you can see the eight-unit condos on the left. To the right, you see the memory care. Over there, you see the memory care for non-residential use. So you see sidewalks and esplanade on both sides here, and then on your left, entering into the commons on your left. We're going to turn on the local street here. These are more of the duplex cottages.
Move by through this and then we can come back.
Then we can come back to, yep, and pause.
Pause.
So now we're going to enter through one of what I would call the trail heads, right? The sidewalk is going to lead into the commons. You can see we're focusing on alignments, and we're lining up to what could be a fire feature or some gathering feature internally inside that commons. There's some walls and planting. You can see the, the walls and fencing, planting, all create outdoor spaces and they define these rooms. So even in the compact nature of this, this commons, you can, you can, you feel like you're separated, you have some private space. So we're going to continue down the walk. Looking back here towards the eight-unit condos and the downs road. We're just, we've been calling it that, but...
We call it that, but we want to call it main street.
So, so we're looking back south, down the duplex cottages, and then we're going to head up through the trail. And we're going to hit a, a section of wetland here, so we transition to boardwalk. You can see the boardwalk splits off to your left. That's an eight-unit apartment, and the rest of the 12-unit apartments through the trees. We're going to go right, over the boardwalk to the wetland. You can see all the trees have grown up. Back through a soft surface path that meanders through, be great for jogging or walking your dog. There's for a single-family home on your left. This is kind of a signature element that we have talked about. So this is a trail crossing over the local street, and you see we have a lane split that becomes a traffic calming device, but also a, an opportunity to kind of brand the neighborhood and create a theme around trails and open space. Now we're coming up to the potential natural play feature, maybe another community gathering feature. You can see the back of the single-family homes with fencing in the back to, again, delineate between public and private space. Looking up to the north, that would be towards the center of the village, then back to the right, heading up to, crossing over the wetland into the second commons, behind some additional single-family. You can see it feels very comfortable. And again, the fencing, the trail, planting, everything works to delineate public and private spaces. Back to, we're at, we're at the street in the single-family neighborhood now. You can see a separated sidewalk, an esplanade, the street trees, front porches, some landscaping and some buildings. So we're defining a comfortable, safe, open space by design. This street would be, it would be slow travel speed, so good for walking, your children, kids playing in the street. Continuing down along sidewalk, coming up to... But we're slowing down, so it works. So we're going to slow with the trail crossing, and continue on to the single-family. We get a little sliver of wetland here that we're crossing, and then looking left, you see, we just passed an eight-unit apartment. This is the pocket park attached to the 12-unit apartments. So this pocket park is designed to create a nice threshold for the neighborhood, get some separation from the street for the apartments. And then we're taking back out to the downs road. You can see the parking for the apartments is tucked back down the buildings, so it's not breaking your face as you enter. And then back out to the downs road, we're going to go up, and you can kind of see down the, the downs road corridor with the street tree planting and curb extensions or bolt outs, side, gracious sidewalk, long street parking. You can see that planting buffer over to the right. These are the eight-unit condos. See the garages behind the duplex? And that's it.
I think he can do that.
Yeah, he's capable.
That's, that's a good question. I'm wondering, how many, are you going to have, what your, what your plans are in terms of leaving the trees off as many as possible? Because, you know, it's crazy to plant trees, but they start off awfully small, so the first five or six years, it's not going to look as shady and nice unless you have the ability to leave some of the more mature trees there throughout the, throughout the complex. Is that going to be something you're looking at, or you can do, or what?
I can touch on that. I mean, within the developed area, what the buildings are, there'll, there'll be virtually nothing there, you know, that's existing today, just simply because of the way the property's been cut over the years and, and the closeness of, of space we'll happen to work with. So we're going to need to plant a lot, and I think you're showing this eight, 10 years out, is this about what those?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was thinking about it earlier. Yeah, it's probably 10 years.
Probably 10 years out is the trees. I, I struggled with that a little bit, kind of, kind of want to show them a little bit smaller, so that you didn't think that that was day one. That's what I take... That's going to take some time. But the areas that you see behind wooded areas, that stuff's all going to remain.
So that's all the trail, basically?
Trails are going to always be wooded areas. Now, those wooded areas have been cut over pretty hard by the former owner over the years. It's been obviously a couple of times. But there's a lot of good standing, natural trees that will remain in those areas.
Yeah, and this image is when you went through those wetland areas and those wooded areas connecting the neighborhood shows that kind of spacing, you know?
Yeah, it clearly wasn't a bunch of planted trees.
Yeah. And this is along the downs road we talked about, that buffer to enterprise. So, you know, what you're seeing along the curve or along the road is the planted trees to supplement, but there is a...
If you think about this image and the video in general, it's sort of a diagram. The, you know, you could say that the conifers resemble kind of a white line, is more of the wetland and the existing trees, and then the smaller deciduous are probably planted.
Can I ask, if at all possible, having said that, there's been fairly dense housing in the years, I would love to have a site walk. And I don't mean the whole site, but a big piece of it, like get a sense of just what is out there in terms of what the natural space is going to look like. And eight to ten years is not a, it's not a, I'm sure it would be that long, but I'd say I'm a whole lot of the US for the future. But I know, I'm here to know that you're going to try to save the country, that you're going to do a site walk.
I would anticipate it's part of the subdivision process and the site plan process. It's more of a site walk.
I want your boots to go over there.
No, the, this area is on the other side of the road. I believe it was too many, you tell me. Have you given me a thought before you want to look woodlot, cross that, so it can link into my college, my university.
So, one of the tasks that I had given Mark Hampton actually last Friday, as he's back out on site and finishing up wetlands and pool and whatnot, is find us the best location to cross. You know, permitting's going to be tricky, but we've got to cross that road, we've crossed that road to get there. And I had thought so much about tying the Junebury as I had tied into the trail system that exists on the state owned land. This is trail system there?
This state owned land here.
Yes, that's all state owned land right there. That's actually not Junebury.
So if you look up upon this, Rocky's talking about this property here?
Okay.
That is owned by the state admin. There's trails that exist, I think, on the other side of the street.
On the other side of the street. So we're going to try to find the best place and that's the way to get there.
Those trails come out to Sawyer and then walk right across the street or on the sidewalk to Sawyer. You know, I think crossing would actually need to be on the state property.
Yes, I think you probably...
Because the stream goes like this, so if we connect over here, it's one of the state owned.
Well, why does it state on that?
It's a mitigation...
A mitigation area for, I think it might have been, or it's a project or...
Something done in the early nineties.
It was a mitigation.
Yes.
It was a mitigation.
So, we're going to run back to the flyover, all those, we're going to run back to the flyover, all the impressions and...
Do you guys foresee any areas for community gardening or, I guess, community gardening for residents?
I mean, I would see a great opportunity would be, you know, with the plan, maybe, yeah, like maybe open space and go back.
Seems a good to be some spots.
Shoot, not these.
You have to show me where.
Yeah, the answer is yes. As well as a dog park, as well as probably a kiosk area for package delivery. We haven't got, you know, feeling like that site plan and subdivision and everything. We've got too much detail that we can share with you yet, other than it's definitely on our...
On the private road, you envision, they have school buses to go to, right? You ever look, you know, reason?
On the private roads, I would envision there's probably no reason for a school bus to go there. I would envision they probably...
The bottom, you know, just where the club is at?
Anticipating that that's mostly empty, natural, master.
Okay.
Single family homes.
Single family homes, they'll be public, probably less.
I'm trying to think of such a fact.
Yeah. I don't anticipate less with, no, I think if there were children coming out of that neighborhood, probably would be picked up right here. I don't really want to make excuses, but...
Can you add that slide a little bit down? What's going to happen next?
Oh. Play the whole video.
That's after we finish with what we're doing here, that's step two, correct?
Right, we're at step two.
And the next time we see you, we'll be step three. Okay. I'm going to go back to my concern about architecture, okay? Just to make sure that you bring in several suggestions, especially for the, I'm concerned about the apartments, I'm concerned, not solution to the condos and the apartments really, okay? Give us a choice.
So, if I could just to sort of jump on that, to sort of frame what the board's job is tonight, and I think I did a little bit at the outset, but I don't think I sort of dove deep enough. There's really two things that the board are required to determine, and these are sort of the provisions in section seventy of the ordinance. It's one that the master plan is showing development areas and conservation areas in a development plan and pattern consistent with the site inventory analysis. So that's sort of the first component. And then the second item is that the master plan is consistent with the space involved standards and the development standards for plan developments in the zoning district. So at this point, it's about consistency. You're not finding that they've met them because you don't have all the details. That's sort of what comes at site plan and subdivision. You'll dive very deep into the walkability and the, you know, those eight or twelve criteria that are spelled out in the crossroads, the affordable housing. At this point, we said, yes, we're going to, we're going to have the affordable housing. We'll know those details to get the next steps. So at this point, again, I think focusing on the word consistency is important.
So what if for something that sticks out as not being consistent?
Right, if you're seeing anything to that effect. But the one thing that I do want to make certain that you understand, what you are approving is the space involved standard. So they've laid that out in, I think, cap two or something to that effect. But this is the time when, you know, those twenty-five hundred square foot lots are being approved, lots with zero street furniture being approved, five yard setbacks. So, want to be sure you're comfortable with that, Jeff. But again, you know, you'll see what that means.
And the answer is no, not comfortable. Simply in that, to me, twenty-five hundred square feet is workable if I have a good sense of what is going to be sitting on the twenty-five hundred square feet. So I know that kind of gets into the subdivision and site questions, but what the subdivision and the site plans look like really is predicated on the ability of the developer to have a twenty-five hundred square foot lot. Yet, at the same time, until we kind of have a sense of what goes on there, it's tough to say, oh, sure, it's fine, twenty-five hundred square feet. So, that's the difficulty I'm having.
With the understanding, if I may interrupt, that if we said, yes, twenty-five hundred, and what they bring in is limited twenty-five hundred, then they cut themselves a problem.
All right, I'm going to slow us down real quick. Is the applicant done with his presentation?
Yes.
So the next step of this is going to be public comment. I'd like to open that up right now. So if there's anyone here from the public that would like to offer some input or comments as to what you're seeing this evening, please, there's a microphone over there, help yourself. All right, seeing them, we'll close the public comment. Now we get to the good stuff with the board. So I think both Susan and Rachel have concerns about, and I think we're pretty much referencing the table here. I mean, it's this kind of, it's in page three, part two.
The, let me go back to it, saying that the twenty-five hundred square feet is doable. I've done a fair amount of web research. I thank you, Rocky, for including a picture in your presentation with the architecture of Ross Chapin. So I did go through his whole site and read the, all of the information on pocket neighborhoods and what makes good ones, and I'm convinced that it's quite possible here. But I'm still, it's possible, I don't know that I'm ready to say yes, because I'm still not clear what's going on there. The twelve unit apartment buildings, to me, look a little out of proportion to the rest of the site. Again, not against them so much, but I'm still, I still worry about big blocks sitting there right on the street. And that becomes, that becomes the bulk. So to me, it's a question of, I don't think I have quite enough information.
Roger, Susan, do you guys have comments?
I'm thinking about it, and I don't have any solutions, except to say that if we said that the bulk standard as established is fine with us, but then we come back with the actual proposal, and the proposal of what's going to happen with those twenty-five hundred lots isn't acceptable to us, then we'd change it because there's nothing written in concrete.
Well, what the ordinance says is that you're, I just want to find the language, I don't want to go off script here. It talks about the space involved standards applicable to plan developments in individual lots, individual lots and buildings within approved plan developments shall be development standards set forth in the approved master plan for the plan development. So again, you're establishing a space involved. So this, if you're comfortable, or whenever you get to comfortable, would be the approved space involved that goes right on the subdivision plan, gets recorded. Now, what the board will see when they come in for subdivision is you can dive a bit deeper into what that means and you can start to finesse that, maybe we start to talk a little bit about porches and some certain requirements that might be. But I think it is important to note, there will be specific site plan approvals that get done for the multi-family buildings, so the bigger buildings, Rachel, I think you were expressing concerns about. You'll see that architecture right up front, every single detail. Now, the single family lots, once the site plan's approved, like any other subdivision approval has single family lots, they would run off to our code officers and say, I'm building a single family lot. So the board wouldn't necessarily see the single family lots. But again, through the subdivision process, you can refine, you can make conditions of approval of what gets built on the single family lots.
Verify for me if the bulk, the bulk standards that we can seek to approve for this evening, that would be applied just to this phase or the entire project?
Just to this phase. You'll do this again with each phase of development that comes along, correct?
All right. Susan, if you have a follow up?
Yeah, I'm looking to you still as to what it is that you want us to do tonight. I mean, I'm willing to say that, yep, that in the concept is great, but until I actually see the specifics of what's going to go on that twenty-five hundred, I don't know how I can do that.
Well, I mean, just, that's what you're being asked to do, is to say at this point, yep, I think conceptually this can work. Through the subdivision process, you can, as I said, you can further refine it. I think, I don't know, Dan, you were going to speak to sort of these standards and how they fit with other projects, I think, you and I talked a little bit about, they're very similar to what's in the Eastern Village development. I think that must be crossing to a certain extent. So this is, so I don't know if you are prepared to...
Picture that a little bit about that, and I also can provide a bit more context. I'm going to go with the easel over from the PowerPoint, but...
Yeah. Let me just, these are pictures you have up there now. Where is it from? Those are zero.
Yeah, those are fifty, probably two.
So many images of any of the zero, the only one that says zero is the positive second.
Yeah, these are, these are probably closer to ten. How does that...
So this is, this is basically what your plan would do. And we just want to, we want flexibility of zero. Is that what I...
On some lots and there's, you know, architecture, a piece of this conversation where we want to work on porches, we want to work on stoops. Maybe these porches are growing towards the street. You know, there's that, we want some flexibility to work with you to meet your goals at subdivision too. I think the board's going to be looking at all this in detail later on. I was going to talk a little bit about that, but I didn't...
Well, for instance, are they single family homes?
Yeah.
I mean, let's say those are about, what, ten feet?
Just for reference, it's kind of easy to think about, the right away line is probably in these images right about where the back of the sidewalk is, the edge of the sidewalk. Maybe, yeah, maybe it's a little bit inside.
Okay, all right. So that's probably about maybe ten feet.
Yeah, I would say maybe a little, maybe more like fifteen, but...
Fifteen, ten feet. I mean, from the house to the wood, right. So the thing is, if you're going to build a number of homes like that, you're not going to put one right outside.
No.
You're going to kind of keep it somewhat aligned, which is...
But this will be some standard. Some might have a, some might have a six foot porch, others might have an eight foot or a ten foot porch, some might have a full length, some might have a...
We don't want to park cars in the right way.
Sure.
So you have to maintain at least, you know, eighteen feet really from the garage. But then the, but then the porch could potentially encroach a little bit. But I don't think the intent, at least in the single family, is to pull the house all the way up to within two feet of the right way. I don't think that'd be worth it.
But if we hoped that you could do that, then you could end up doing that. In other words, you might not have the intent to do it, but if we said, sure, there's zero front yard, the zero minimum front yard, then there could be houses that end up with zero minimum front yard.
Yeah, or overhangs, like the town counts roof overhangs and front steps, it's not just the wall of the house, it's what's connected to a house. And examples in other zones in town, Eastern Village has a zero foot setback. And that's a product of, again, not all the houses, but some houses want to have front steps that go right down to the, to the right away. And some places, the right away, the road's not centered, or there's a big esplanade and a sidewalk and there's the right away. So visually, it looks like it's setback fifteen feet, but sort of legally, it's not. And that's the trickiness around setback from the right away versus looking at it from the curb.
Can I, let me test a couple of assumptions, because this is all new to me. Rocky, are you going to be doing, I'm assuming you're going to be doing the building? Is that correct, on the single family homes?
We'll be hoping, absolutely.
How many designs, different designs do you anticipate having there?
Oh, I'm, really the sky's the limit. Probably we'd have four or five typical designs, but...
With different elevations for design, so that there's variation.
Different elevations, a lot, you know, we're kind of fixed on, you know, what size footprint we can have there, but we'd have some different looks, different architecture. So the, like Dan's talking about, you know, if we're allowed zero setback, then we can work with this area. And there will be some variation as to how far these houses are setback. They won't be all in a straight line. And, you know, we're working in a constant curve here as well. I'm just talking about just in the subdivision now. So there's, you know, we're looking for some flexibility there from the board to allow us to replace these houses.
One, sorry. I was, one thing I was going to offer, I think, one of the things I heard Dan talking a little bit about, maybe it starts to address part of your concern, maybe it doesn't, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. When you brought up Eastern Village and how, you know, there's zero... When you brought up Eastern Village and how, you know, there's zero setbacks, there's actually sort of very, if I recall correctly, I'm trying to pull it up now, it sort of talks about a zero setback for stoops, stairs, and what have you, but the house itself actually needs to be three, five, whatever it'd be. And so there could be that sort of, I think, Rachel, that was part of the concern I was starting to hear, is that if we say zero, that means, yep, you can put the house right there, but you could build in that sort of flexibility that says, okay, within the first 10 feet, you can have these components. The house itself needs to setback whatever.
Okay. I mean, that's helpful. I'm looking at the visual that Rocky included into your example project, that includes, that includes a picture of the classical lane in Eastern Village, what it actually looks like, and that was very helpful, to be able to see that.
Does it, does it also have the...
That's one of the examples, yeah.
Pretty close to the street.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, the goal isn't to build houses uncomfortably close to the street. They need to be set, we want this image implemented in the field. That's the character of the neighborhood. So the houses aren't going to be crowded at the zero for setback in many places. It's, it's sort of anomalies, or where the road wide, road right-of-way is wider, locations along the down road. We anticipate a pretty wide right-of-way. That's not going to be a 50-foot wide right-of-way. It's going to be, you know, 60 or more, and it's going to include a lot of different infrastructure beyond the street. So you're going to have a large esplanade. You're going to have a sidewalk, and we want the sidewalks for multifamilies to tie right into the front steps, so it's integrated. So, and that's stuff that you're going to see at site plan, that if you don't like it, tying in as closely as you're seeing it under site plan review, you can say, actually move that back or do this architectural treatment to address the concern. So that's, that's really the intent, is to enable to bring a plan like this to you, because one of our challenges is we can't really design much more without some certainty around what the rules are. And I know it's kind of a double-edged sword, but that's what really Eastern Village's process was, is they were allowed to propose to the planning board what the space involved standard should be in order to deliver a certain design. It was, it was a discussion at subdivision as to, okay, that works on those lots and it doesn't work on these other lots.
Excuse me, but that's perfect. That's just what I'm looking for. You know, I mean, I have no problems with saying, go try, go for it, try it. If it doesn't work, we'll be the first ones to know. And if you need to adjust something, again, we'll be the first ones to know. Basically, what we're saying is, I think the zero setback was really very, very good to get that straightened around. We really appreciate that lot. But basically, the kinds of things that I was concerned about, I don't think I'm concerned about, because this isn't the last time when I've been sure about this.
Probably too close. If I could address the lot sizes, so one of the, is my point here, but we had talked about, and we've come to the, to this, thinking now that this is a condominium association, and what we had talked about earlier is less important. But if you could envision a lot line between these, could be the garage wall could actually be a lot line, could be zero lot line there, actually each unit has its own lot. We have a plan to show that at one time. We're just trying to keep our options open, because that is done in many areas, probably not locally, but that was one of, that's kind of how we hit the 2500 square feet, I think. And envision that these duplex condos, actually each unit is on its own lot. That's how that could be, 2500 square feet.
And as a condo, it basically means all the lot area, or you saw one lot, one lot. So physically on the ground, it's the same layout.
I don't, I'm going to call them, it's okay. And if I'm not mistaken, we're looking at Eastern Village as an example. I think the units over there are actually larger than the other, than the building. Something is wrong. It wasn't good, I thought. Yeah. So the scale here would be much, much smaller.
I was able to pull up the, again, this is just point of reference, or it doesn't have to necessarily follow this, but the Eastern Village does, it does speak to, for single families, a zero front yard setback, it has a little asterisk, and then it says, zero for porches, stoops, stairs, or other building entry types, increase to three feet to face of building, non-livery areas. So that's the type of thing...
So like, non-living space is allowed to encroach, basically? Or allowed to be, yeah.
But is that saying only three feet are allowed for a porch width?
So that would, so again, it says, it's a zero setback for porches and stoops, it is three, a minimum of three feet to the face of a, of the house. So that is potentially saying that, you know, you could have a three-foot stoop or, I don't think you'd get a porch in there, because you need to have stairs.
So that would allow, like a good example, that would allow, so you could, where you had, so this is...
But when they say access to three-foot porch...
And that's sort of what we have, a condition that we're trying to create.
And so, and I think one of the things that we might, if I'm sort of hearing the board, this establishes that for townhouses, single-family, for all housing types. It may be, you know, our thinking has moved, you know, this is 12 years ago, I think when these were originally established, so it may be for certain unit types, that makes sense, but for single families, maybe it's something different, where we're talking about porches, to your concern.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're talking about porches consistently, then we're going to need to talk about something more than a three-foot, because that's basically, maybe you get a chair on there, and that's about it. And so it's not, not conducive to creating community, if you really can't use it.
So, you know, what it's worth, I, you know, I think most, you know, most of what I see, I get that your apartments, your bigger buildings go with the service, et cetera. I mean, it kind of makes sense, you know, the entryway closest to the parking, you get that. I think where I struggle with it a little bit is on the single-family side. But I also understand your point, that you want some flexibility with where you're working, where you can place things. And if it comes out looking anything like what we just saw, or close to it, you know, it's going to be a very impressive piece. And I don't think anyone here wants to really handcuff you on the work that you're trying to do. So do I believe that there's some sort of language that could be incorporated that allows you that flexibility, and kind of gives us that piece of mind that we can get to a point in the next, the next phase, if there is something that you'll see, or even writing in that, you know, maybe we're more stringent, but allow them to request a waiver on certain parcels versus their process.
Where the, where the land doesn't allow it to northbound, or something like that.
But I feel like there's probably some language here, but I feel like in general, it's most as more as comfortable. I just feel like it's probably, I'm working out the language.
I think it is a language thing. I think we're in agreement, but it's a language thing.
I do have one other thing, and that's the maximum building height. You've got a six-story building. Are those apartments that you would be building at these six stories, that we were seeing?
No, you're seeing a three-story. We showed a three-story.
So why are you asking for six?
That's the building height allowed in the district. So there's, there's certain zoning standards that already exist that you can't change throughout the whole zoning district. And those include the maximum building coverage, 75%, the maximum building height of six stories or 75 feet, or I don't know if there's other ones, but those are the two that, or the density, the maximum density, 20 units per acre.
So you're not proposing a six-story building area in here, nor do you intend to build one?
No, we're not.
But that's in the base.
Yeah, we filled in the other space involved that we're charged to work with you on establishing. So there's these base, base, space involved requirements that we can change.
Is this the, Jay, is this where it has to be consistent throughout the whole development?
You're talking about across the whole 500 acres? No, this is only for this part, phase of development, whatever we're calling them. When we deal with the next phase of development, we'll start this conversation over. And maybe the same...
But that height stays throughout? Right, I'm not asking to change that. That's in the base, though.
So the zoning, the zoning district, as has already been stated, but I'll just sort of echo under, so Section D, Space Involved Regulations in the Cross Road Plan Development District, under D2, Planned Developments, this is where I read earlier about the space involved standards applicable to planned developments in individual lots and buildings within the approved development shall be the development standards set forth in the approved master plan, subject to the following limits. It gets into maximum net residential density, I think Dan just talked about 20 units per acre, maximum building height is the same language that's in there, the six stories are 35 feet, and the maximum pervious surface ratio, 75 feet, and then the setbacks from Jason's zoning districts. Those are the four that the town said, thou shalt. The others, the setbacks, and the frontages, and those type of elements, it's, you know, it's a blank canvas, so to speak.
And then, thank you. Does Roger or Susan or Rachel do, does anyone have any follow-up questions they made of this, but I'm not sure?
No. I'm, I'm very confused. I've kind of heard markers of assuming, I mean, on the things...
I think we should just sign that video we had.
Fill that.
Yes.
Whatever that zone...
Make it look like that.
It needs all the other standards.
That's right.
So I had just a couple of notes, and perhaps it's been resolved since this submission, pervige around the alleyways and public acts, public places?
Yep, so staff previously had a comment to that end, and I think that all looked to you, but I recall we talked about that, and we were comfortable with the way they addressed that at this point.
All right, and then I have page six. Could you elaborate a little bit more on the enterprise drive connection, if I may respond on the four-way intersection versus the... You kind of went over it a little bit. What was, you said it off by 150 feet, you said, and that was just, you didn't want to align the development with that intersection? Was that the...
It really, it came down to the, to the site layout within the multifamily, and we felt that, and we looked at it 100 different ways and tried to get, get that alignment and working with the multifamily. And we felt that ultimately, it, it made it feel like you were driving through, you had to drive through parking, or drive through, or split the multifamily. And so we felt like consolidating the road to one side allowed that to, allowed the multifamily to kind of be its own neighborhood, to be more walkable and not cross the street, or not feel like you were...
I just wanted to just help check. Because the previous version, that had it aligned, or were we asking for that to align? Was that requested by staff or question?
We had questioned it, and I think what we put in our memo at this point, the board was comfortable, seemed like the advocate made, like was just said, a reasonable rationale for it. Certainly, it will need to be looked at by traffic engineers through the subdivision process, and if they say this is a public safety issue, we can revisit it. But at this point, it seems reasonable and logical, at least to staff, and hopefully if the board agrees, then, you know, we think it sort of meets the consistency standard. Like all these elements, you know, we have to go through the, the next step is going to be that sort of more rigid, you know, review, but it seems to meet the phase, straight phase test that staff at this point, so.
And you mentioned that we have another connection. Oh, I'm sorry. Right. I noted here that there's a waiver request on the 40-foot aisle width on some of your roads. Those are always going to be limited to 44. Is it limited just to the condos, or is that applies off the single-family and condo?
Right, I have my, my... That was, and that was more just for the single-family, rather than the main.
In the main, you had that 60, is that correct?
Yeah, and, yes, there is, I think there is 44-foot right-of-way in the condos. I think we, I think we need it there. And there is, I think, portions of...
If it finishes out, if we actually develop it, out as a condo, we'll technically...
Oh, there, yeah, that's right, yeah.
It depends on how that phase finishes out, if it actually is a...
Technically, if it's a private drive, there's no, there is no right-of-way.
Right.
And for reference, I mean, Eastern Village is 44. The town's... Just again, for point of reference, I think that would be another element that sort of get into, if the board, if that 44 design comes in, the board says, well, things aren't fitting here, or no way are we going to take that as a public road. Indeed, that was what was being proposed. That conversation's not over.
Right. I just wanted to check, maybe it wasn't the main drag. There was a note in here from staff about the front entrance, and I, I think I, this is probably just a question in general on the construction side. I can see the benefits of doing it both ways or not doing it either way, but whether or not that front entrance way is kind of brought to kind of a showcase finish. I can see you guys...
Off of one, you could...
Off of one, yeah, I'm sorry. I can see the benefit of that being kind of a sharper piece, but I also see the detriment of driving construction trucks through it for 10 years while you develop the place. So, I mean, are you, at this time, saying you prefer a way to develop that, that finish front entrance?
So I think as part of Phase One, there's definitely beautification processes to happen right out at the end of 44. I think over time, that light system out there is probably going to evolve and changes will be, will be made, not as part of Phase One, other than some beautification, certainly needs that. We envision that we would be doing that as part of our Phase One approval. What that means, I'm not sure, but we'll get a good team, they'll figure it out. But I do think as the town develops, maybe in the future phases, I think that light system is, you know, that's going to change as the law.
All right. And a hydrology investigation waiver, and that's just because we have a little extra time to get that underway.
That's, yeah, it's currently underway, and we're going to look at that during the detailed second plan.
Okay. Process. I think that's it for my list.
All right, just in the staff notes they talked about, you're interested in developing a connection to the enterprise, Mrs. Hy, for the south, is that basically the...
A sewer connection, a potential sewer connection only? That's not a, that's not a, any road or a sidewalk or anything like that.
I think our staff comment was about the road connection. So that existing right-of-way, connected, so that was the intersection we were just talking about?
No, listen, I'm just, just here.
Under which?
The applicant is proposing to create a direct connecting to enterprise drive at this location, which I, I took that for me, not for you. While I'm writing the, the, you give a connection for the south on the Strabber Down Road. So I took, I, the way I read that, is this, that's why I asked the question earlier, because we're not able to cross it. And I thought you were going to throw the connection down, so, but you're not.
No.
Just the one connection up here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's how we were, that's what we had.
Okay.
It was a little bit. My apologies.
Roger, Susan, Rachel?
I have one observation, I guess, and that's simply that with that on-street parking along the downs, I would assume that the cars that were parked, they would be subject to removal in a snow, in a snow emergency? So where would, where the, where would you end up wrecked in cars that are parked along there during the snow, for that?
That's a question that we're not fully prepared to answer tonight.
Well, that's, it's an observation, it's something that's going to be...
It is an observation, we actually, we talked about it, Bill and I especially, because snow is, is big in our world. So we're going to look real closely at our parking, we're going to do an analysis of all of our apartments right now, that we currently own in this town and other towns. I think on the multifamily, 1.5 spaces per unit... I think on the multifamily, 1.5 spaces per unit works. We gear towards 1.75. So maybe, you know, maybe some of our overflow is the off-street and maybe somebody uses it regularly, but there's probably enough room for another car for them. I also think we do have a spot, we talked a little bit about this corner up here, there's some developable land that I think could tie in with maybe some parking, satellite parking. I think that's where our package drop probably goes, as well as a dog park up in here. So I, I think we could have adequate parking within and not fully account on the on-street parking.
And, and the commented question is snow removal. With this sort of a density, there's not a lot of places to put the snow.
That's correct.
You're going to have to consider that.
We could probably prohibit some, all...
Particularly the trucking.
That's it.
That's it. All right, so I think, I think we're mostly out of comments, and it has been a general sentiment from the members that are present that we're relatively comfortable with what we're assuming of tonight. So that said, I would make a motion to approve the master plan with the condition that the setback standards may be varied as determined by the planning board during subdivision or site plan review process.
What was that?
I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Sure that's the unit. Congratulations, gentlemen, it looks fantastic. We hope this proves to us we've been doing a great job so far, it's a long process. See you again in a couple of seconds.
And we're, we look with a basic breadth of things, architectural lines.
And Steph is, we are coordinating, I'm trying to get a wetland peer review done out there, so...
And I will dare the motion to adjourn.
Second?
I want to give my...
Okay.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Good evening.